I'd like to say thank you. Thank you to our mayor and Mayor Ross and to our city manager, Morgan, and also thank you, Paulette Taylor, for your warm welcome. My name is Dr. Alicia Moore, and good morning. We are here, we are smiling, though you can't tell, but we're happy to be here. I'm going to serve as your moderator today. I'm an associate professor at Southwestern University here in Georgetown, and I'm very, very happy to be here. So, good morning, and thank you for being here for the Georgetown Cultural Citizen Memorial Association's Juneteenth Virtual Town Hall. Try to say that fast, about three times, but very happy to be here. So this is the 68th, as you heard, celebration of Juneteenth here in Georgetown, and so I'd like to welcome you as well. Our theme today is embracing change, the new norm, and we are examining education as the new norm. And in today's uncertain world, in the midst of a pandemic, and in a time that our schools need to be courageous in creating differently configured physical spaces, there is the need to create spaces that value all children, that really value all children. It's imperative that the social, emotional, and academic well-being of children is taken into consideration through the reshaping of teaching, learning, and changing lives across our country. On the strength of this pivotal time in our country, a nation at risk has an opportunity to finally become a true nation at hope. So I am going to now introduce to you our esteemed panelists. First, we have, as a parent, Alexandria Clark. So Alexandria is going to say hello for a moment.
Hi, everyone, I'm so glad to be here.
Alexandria, as I said, is a parent, and she works with children or has worked with children for seven years. She's a pre-kindergarten special education paraprofessional in the Georgetown Independent School District, and she assists a classroom teacher by performing a variety of tasks, such as the implementation of instructional content and behavior management strategies. Prior to employment in G.I.S.D., Alex was a community liaison for a nonprofit here in Georgetown, where she, among other important tasks, connected individuals and families with services. Alex also enjoys spending time with her family and watching any TV program that explores legal issues. Welcome, Ms. Clark. Our next panelist is parent Michael Sedwick.
Good morning, everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Sedwick is a Georgetown resident. He and his wife, Alana, have four children, three of which are teens attending schools in the Georgetown Independent School District. Mr. Sedwick is employed at Southwestern University as a grounds engineer and is an integral part of the facilities management team. He puts a strong emphasis on family values and parent advocacy. Welcome, Mr. Sedwick. Next, we have panelist Alexis Campbell. Can you say hello, Ms. Campbell?
Good morning, hello, everyone, happy to be here.
Great. Ms. Campbell is the proud principal at Ray Elementary School in the Hutto, Texas Independent School District. She has been employed in Hutto since 2012, and she has a bachelor's of science degree in applied learning and development from the University of Texas at Austin, a master's of education and educational administration from Concordia University in Austin, and is currently working toward her doctorate in school improvement in Texas State University. So welcome, Ms. Campbell. We have panelist Paula Simmons. Thank you. I corrected myself. She is an assistant principal, and she's going to say hello.
Hello, good morning.
She's an assistant principal in the George, I'm sorry, in the Flugerville Independent School District. I wanted to make everybody be a part of Georgetown, and they're not. She said she was. But she's the assistant principal in the Flugerville Independent School District in Flugerville, Texas. She received her undergraduate degree. I sure can. There. She received her undergraduate degree from Texas State University in Child Development, and her master's in early childhood special education from the University of Texas at Austin. She's an experienced administrator who currently resides in Georgetown with her daughter. She previously served in Georgetown ISD for more than eight years at Benold Middle School and Georgetown High School. She believes that all children deserve a world-class education. So welcome, Mrs. Simmons. And our final panelist, as they say last but not least, I would like to introduce Dr. Fred Brent.
Good morning.
Dr. Brent has devoted his career to public education, and in July of 2014, Dr. Brent accepted the position of superintendent of schools in the Georgetown Independent School District. Dr. Brent proudly received his undergraduate degree from Oklahoma City University, his graduate degree from Lamar University, and his doctorate in educational leadership from Texas A&amp;M University. Dr. Brent is married to Terry, and they have three children. Alex and Abby attend Georgetown schools, and Austin graduated from Georgetown High School in 2018 and now attends Texas A&amp;M University. Welcome, Superintendent Brent. So now I'm going to give you some guidelines for what we're going to do today and this conversation that we are going to have. These guidelines are set, but yet we may, depending on the conversation, go into some more conversational-like talking. So this morning, it's our hope to provide an opportunity for authentic conversations rather than just answering the prescribed questions. And each panelist will be asked probing questions. The following panel questions were developed to explore ways in which we can more consistently and more effectively meet the needs of our students during the new normal. So when it comes time for our questions, I will state who the questions are for, whether it is a question directed at parents or administrators. And after I state whether the question is for parents or administrators, then I'll state the question, and I'll direct those questions to specific panelists here by name. So our panel questions. So we're going to begin with an open question or an opening question that all of our panelists will be asked to answer. And that question is, "What have been the greatest challenges, barriers, or obstacles to online learning?" And so I'm going to start with Ms. Clark.
Hi. The greatest challenge for online learning is motivating the kids to get online. Towards the end of the year, they started to get burnt out, and so you kind of had to be creative so that they could get their work done. It was also tough, like, not having the materials that you needed for assignments. I can recall having to go to the store to get the materials that I needed in order for my daughter to get her work done. So those were some challenges in our household.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Mr. Sedwick.
I think one of the biggest issues was finding something that consistently worked, excuse me, and then being able to get prompt responses from the teachers. But I also understand that they were feeling their way through this also, and it was a learning thing, and still is for everyone. But yeah, just communication and just trying to come up with something that worked as far as scheduling.
Awesome, thank you. Now, we will have Mrs. Alexis Campbell, and she's going to answer that question. And since it's just been a moment, "What have been the greatest challenges, barriers, or obstacles to online learning?"
There were a couple of obstacles. I think one of the biggest obstacles that as an administrator of a campus with 600 students was ensuring that all of my students received a quality education. It's a lot easier to make sure that's happening when they're all on the campus with myself and with the teachers, but we had to, we didn't have that control. And when I say "we," I'm saying as an administrator and the teachers. We had to, you know, trust that our students and our parents were doing everything that they could to make sure that, you know, the students learned. And this was something that was new for everyone, so we all had to get used to the online platform. And also, being mindful, which is something that I talk to my staff about, being mindful that, you know, our parents are trying, but once again, it's new for them, just like it's new for us. It was very helpful for me, being a parent of three young students, and trying to juggle homeschooling along with working full-time because I was able to actually get a taste of what our parents were dealing with. And I think the other obstacle was just, and our district did a wonderful job with making sure we had hotspots and Chromebooks given out, so just the beginning process of transitioning and making sure everyone had what they needed and everyone understood what was expected and just making sure that I was communicating clearly and effectively with parents. So there were a lot of obstacles, but that's a summary of some of what we dealt with.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Campbell. Next, Mrs. Simmons. Simmons, I'm sorry, I keep saying Simmons.
Actually, to echo what Ms. Campbell shared, I am a part of Flugerville Independent School District, and they too did an amazing job at providing remote locations where students and parents could come and check out technology. We also work well with our support services team, where we had social workers and our counselors gather for us the necessary resources for parents to receive free Wi-Fi for three months. I worked at a Title I school, and so for our students, not every student had technology. And so a major barrier for us was the lack of technology initially starting off, as well as the lack of exposure to our technology tools. We, as a district, launched our classrooms through Google Classroom. Everything was online. Each campus in our district, we actually put together a website that our teachers used on a regular basis to account for remote learning. And the major barriers were pretty much consistent with those who just did not have enough technology, those that lacked Wi-Fi, and we had those that had Wi-Fi for the first time, as well as technology, but they lacked having the exposure to those instructional online tools.
Thank you, Mrs. Simmons, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Dr. Brent.
Yes, ma'am. So in Georgetown ISD, the challenges, I'd like to echo the things that I've already heard. We experienced some of those things as a family at home as well. My wife's an elementary counselor, and I think that, I'll speak to another aspect of this because we, much like the other districts you've heard from, it was, I think we've issued over 3,000 Chromebooks to the community. We've given out over 400, I think, hotspots so families can have Wi-Fi access, and we fed, gosh, over 120,000 meals today. So our greatest concern immediately was reaching the students who were going to be the most challenging to reach. Not every child has an advocate at home that's going to try to pursue the most that they can for their kid, and how do we make sure we reach all students? So from handing out printed materials to teachers contacting kids who we might have a hard time reaching, to the extent that there were some families we reached that decided they weren't going to opt-in on online learning anyway. And so it was, what I'll speak to is my concerns for the kids who we knew needed to be in school. So the most difficult thing for me is that if you look at our counseling services and the social-emotional learning needs of our kids, there are students who we intervene on their behalf with Child Protective Services, with different services they just need, and school may be the safest place for those students. And all I could think about during that time of closure was who's advocating for those kids now? If we were having to intervene on their behalf as a child, and I was just worried about the students that we just couldn't get to. So our challenges extended much like everyone else. Connectivity, how we make sure if a kid doesn't have a device, if they're not responding, going to visit to their house. We did everything from home visits to phone calls. Our teachers were just warriors in that, trying to make sure we made connectivity. And also, our teachers were trying to figure out how to take care of kids at home, their personal children, and offer online instruction in an environment they had never expected to experience. On March 13th, we were told, "You're not coming back to school." And we had to turn it around in a two-week window. And one of those weeks was during spring break, so people worked around the clock to try to figure out how to best meet the needs of our kids. So the challenges were great, more expansive than I could give you in a three-minute response, but I just keep going back to, there are more kids that were stuck at home that COVID was probably the least of their worries. They were at much greater risk for other types of neglect and things that they just needed that they can get at a public school. So a lot of challenges out there, I just can say it that way.
Thank you, Dr. Brent. Our next two questions are for our parents. That first question is, "What improvements would you suggest for the out-of-school time during the pandemic?" And I am going to Mr. Sedwick.
I would just suggest to continually work to try to find a routine, to keep the kids in the routine as if they were in school, so that when we do start back school, they're already still used to that pattern and stuff. And that's one of the things that we continually tried to do with our kids, was to keep them in the mindset that you're not going to sleep till 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock. You're not going to just lay around in your flip-flops and this, that, and another. No, put on some, okay, you might not have to dress up, but you're not just going to lay around like a slop. You have to keep that mindset of, and then that way it's an easy transition when it's up and running again.
Mr. Sedwick, I feel like you need to come talk to my children at my house. We had the same conversations. I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to jump in, I'm sorry.
That is fine, thank you, Dr. Brent, because it really is important to have some semblance of normality, for sure. Ms. Clark, so what are improvements that you suggest for the out-of-school time during the pandemic?
So I would echo off of what Mr. Sedwick said, but also, on the other side of it, I know that there are different programs out there as far as having the kids be able to access books and things like that, but I would say that maybe there needs to be more communication between parent and teachers when it comes to curriculum and what books that they may need, or just have like a program where they have access to all of the books, because that goes back to what I was saying before. I've found myself having to buy a book that they needed to read that I couldn't find access to in the programs that were available. So on that side of things, I would just ask for like more communication so that maybe parents could go and buy that and not have to put off an assignment because they have to wait for the book to arrive.
And yes, that's definitely important to be able to help all of the materials that you need to continue teaching. Parents become those teachers at home, the ones that are there, that serve as tutors, as well as serving as parents. So that is very, very important. Our next question for our parents is, "What kind of materials," and I think you alluded to this, "what kinds of materials or other items do parents need to assist their children with online learning?" So what kinds of materials or other items do parents need to assist their children with online learning? And let's see, Ms. Clark.
I would say parents need access to a laptop and Wi-Fi. They need to have their children's Gmail usernames and passwords. I think it's really important for them to be able to have access to that so they could go in and make sure that they are doing the work that needs to be done. And you also may need like basic school supplies, materials, even if it's just a journal and a pencil, because we needed that. And the last thing would be just to say a prayer or two for patience because we all need some patience with these children.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. I definitely understand. I've heard that from many, many parents. There's even a meme, there's even a meme where a parent is working at her computer and all of her children are duct taped and tied up. So I'm sure it didn't get to that point, but I know exactly what you mean. Same question for Mr. Sedwick. What improvements, I'm sorry, "What kinds of materials or other items do parents need to assist their children with online learning?"
And I'm sorry if you heard me in the background because Ms. Clark took my main answer, which is patience. Just some patience and just staying with it and staying on top of them, or just continually encouraging the kids to, you know, to push through that this is new for everybody, you know, just trying to help them understand. And then just the basic school supplies. I mean, you know, just the basic things that they would have when they're going to school. And Wi-Fi, of course, and I know that that might not be accessible at the house, but you know, it's different places, you know, the library and maybe even communicating with the teacher or something to get, you know. And, excuse me, and speaking of, and even experiencing this, experiencing this situation gives me a new outlook because I was impatient for a little while when it started, but it gives me a new outlook on the challenges that our teachers, that the administrators, the teachers go through in the class. You know, I think my kids are wonderful sometimes, but yeah, I can only imagine what the teachers go through with 20 kids with a personality ranging from A to Z. And so I would really like to thank our teachers and our administration from the bottom of my heart for all that you do for our kids and just continue to do what you do with the love, love of God in your heart and knowing that it's going to pay off eventually. So thank you.
I think during this time, I think many parents definitely tip their hats, so to speak, to teachers and understand what that means to want the best for students, having many of them in the classroom, you know, up to 23 or more, depending on high school or middle school. So I tip my hat, so to speak, to teachers as well. A question has come in, and Dr. Brent, the next question is for you, but there's a question too that came in that's, "What different kinds of instructional arrangements are being considered for students of different grade levels when school reopens in the fall?"
Okay, you need to repeat that. I was trying to find the question. Can you ask it again, is on the chat?
Yes, it is in the chat.
Okay. So the question, "What kind of difference in instructional arrangements are being considered for students in different grade levels when school opens in the fall?" I will try to speak to that very briefly, and here's what I can tell you we think is going to happen. We think the state is going to allow us to come back to school as normal, and we are waiting, we're supposed to be told this coming Tuesday to what degree we're allowed to reopen schools. If they put a percentage of students who are allowed in the building at one time, let's say if it's only 50% of the building can be occupied, then we will have to build different schedules. But here's, in speaking to the concerns I've heard of our parents, and thank you guys for being here and sharing, and we've been making notes, it is, first and foremost, when kids come back to school, there's going to be safety. And we're exploring right now, what are the most appropriate safety protocols? Questions being asked of us are, "Will students be required to wear masks? And will staff be required to wear masks?" And we sent out a survey yesterday morning, and within the first two hours, we had over 1,600 family responses to that survey, so we're getting that data, and we're pulling that to determine where we go there. I know Ms. Campbell's an elementary principal, and I don't know what it's going to be like if you try to make first graders wear a mask. I don't know. And what it's going to be like to have a first grader socially distanced or a kindergartner, but we're going to have to figure that piece out. Also, we know that there's going to be parents who want online learning, and some parents may not feel, there's going to be some medically fragile people who don't feel they can come back to school. So some of the arrangements being looked at are online learning platforms for families who feel like they need to stay home. And that curriculum's going to have to be more robust than what we put together. Our teachers, in a two-week window, had to put that together, and they worked so hard, but we know it's going to have to be more robust because we have to ensure student advancement among the standards. You and I both, everyone knows, our purpose is to help kids grow, and numeracy and literacy is going to be critical, especially at the early grade levels, to make those academic advancements. So for online learning, it's going to have to probably look a little different. We will need to make sure we're attentive, that no one goes without Wi-Fi access or computer devices. We've ordered a lot of technology this summer and are ordering more technology to where there will be no barriers to any student having access to a device or Wi-Fi access because that is the key vehicle for instructional delivery. We expect to shut school down. We are planning to have to shut school down throughout the course of the year. And when that happens, can the students in the building flip to online learning right away? So the general safety protocols we're working through right now, and we have about five different teams of district leaders and principals and staff working through, what are the safety protocols we need to have in place? We have a lot of guidelines out there that we're navigating for when kids and staff do come back. What are the protocols we're putting in place for people who feel like they need to have online learning? And how do we make those learning programs match up so that all students are progressing through the standards appropriately? And so we will be getting that information out as soon as we can. The only thing I would tell you is, a lot of this is fluid and it's changing. So we have not announced our final plans, and we probably won't announce our final plans till probably a month from school. And as things evolve, we will probably be doing even more surveys about how are you feeling about coming back to school? What are your greatest concerns? And really worried about the social-emotional learning aspects of our students? What are their social and emotional needs after being away from their peers this time, all this time in the summer? How do we talk about COVID? How do we talk about risks? And making sure that every child in the district has those touch points where they can call an adult or reach out to an adult that works for Georgetown ISD to get them the support they need. So the whole gamut, safety protocols and all, is under review right now, but we do expect to have online learning options, and we'll be implementing the guidelines as they're delivered to us, and we'll be communicating those throughout the summer. I wish I had more details for you, but that's as much as I know right now as far as we are still waiting for clarity, and we will be communicating that. But the instructional arrangements will be, we'll jump over every hurdle we possibly can, and safety procedures and protocols for the wellness of the people in the building will be paramount. I don't know if I even answered the question. I've tried to give as many details, but those are all the details I have. And if I think of more, I'll get it to you.
Okay, and Mr. Robinson, if there are any more questions about your questions, if you'll just continue to put them in the chat. And thank you, Dr. Brent. Also know that Dr. Brent is taking copious notes, so he will be able to even further understand what some of the issues are, especially listening to our parents and listening to other administrators. There is another question for Dr. Brent, so Dr. Paula Donning, I will come back to that question. I'm going to ask some questions of the other administrators, and I do see your question. So to the other administrators, here's the question. "If schools are closed for the fall semester and delayed for opening their doors, what plans do you have for online classes?" And it's a two-part question, and I can repeat it. The second part is additionally, "How will you ensure that each student has internet or Wi-Fi access to participate in virtual learning?" And so I'm going to go to Ms. Campbell first. And let me know if you need me to repeat the question.
Okay. So what I currently have in place, or will put in place, is parent training, if needed. So we will provide training for parents on how to use the platform. Now that, you know, everyone has had a chance to use it, I still feel as if there's some questions that parents may have. We use Google Classroom, and there are times where it can be a bit confusing. So I just want to ensure that parents have the opportunity to ask any questions that they may have with the platform, and maybe we can provide some more resources on what would be, I guess, most... And maybe we can provide some more resources on what would be, I guess, most effective or the easiest way to use it with their, with their students. One of the blessings is that Google Classroom was in place in our district before all of this happened. So our students, they were familiar with the platform. It was just, you know, ensuring that our parents are also familiar with it. So that's one of the things that's on my list right now. Let me see, let me go back. Can you repeat the question one more time?
The last, I, I believe you answered the first part of that question. The second part is how will you ensure that each student has internet or Wi-Fi access to participate in virtual learning?
Okay. So we, as a district, did well with that. It wasn't just a campus, you know, each campus had to figure it out on their own. We communicated with parents through email, also making phone calls. We created a document, an online tracker, and with this online tracker, we kept track of who needed what instructional materials or online materials, as well as who actually was completing the work. So we, we kept track of what was happening with each individual student. So as, what we'll basically do, the same thing we did again, which, which worked well, is communicating with those families, having our set list of who needs a Chromebook or who may need a hotspot. And so we were able to provide all of those resources for our students in the entire district. So I'm not just speaking of my school. And we had it set up at the high school and parents were able to pick up what they needed. It was a very easy process and I can't remember the exact number, but we have about 8,000 students and I believe we handed out either 3,000, maybe 3,000 Chromebooks and a couple of hundred hotspots. So parents, they had everything that they needed. And I noticed one parent, I think it was Alexandra, mentioned having to buy things for her children. We didn't ask our parents to do any of that. Everything was provided through the online platform. And one other thing that I do have on my list from the first question is also train the teachers more. Everything happened fast. Everyone did an excellent job adjusting. But I would also like to provide more training for my teachers because as we all know, everyone's on, everyone's different when it comes to technology. Some are more advanced than others. Some teachers actually use Google Classroom throughout the year, some didn't. So providing that training for the teachers who feel as if it would be beneficial so that their Google Classroom can run more smoothly this, this time around.
Same questions for Mrs. Simmons. Again, if schools are closed for the fall semester, delayed in opening their doors, what plans do you have for online classes? And additionally, how will you ensure each student has internet or Wi-Fi access to participate in virtual learning?
Okay. Well, thank you. Like we did this spring, I would think that we would echo and just simply repeat the same process, which was to poll our parents. We, we took surveys and then we really utilized our advisory teachers. And so what we did is each advisory teacher had a set of students that they were responsible for. And they reached out to the parents and actually asked, you know, for a needs assessment, basically. You know, does your, your child have internet in the home or are there multiple students in the home? Because we found that some kids had like three siblings in one household and one, their technology was a cell phone. So that it's quite difficult to navigate through that. So just seeing those different instances brought to our attention, it really helped us go about meeting those needs and doing our very best to provide whatever those students needed. I do echo Ms. Campbell again in terms of providing clear expectations and communications, not only for our parents and our students, but for our teachers. This was new and we have been blessed that Flugerville ISD does participate in blended learning. And so for our students, it was not totally brand new. However, we do give teachers their full autonomy. They have to teach, you know, towards the teaks. And as a district, we set up YAGs for our students to look at the year at a glance in terms of curriculum. However, some teachers were more advanced. Some teachers were already, you know, utilizing it. And depending on the discipline in which you teach, technology can work much more easier, should I say, for like a math or a science, so to speak. But it really has to do with the level of exposure and awareness that those teachers have. So I would just simply echo clear communication and training for students, parents, as well as our teachers.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you very much. In the Q and A, there are two questions and these questions are for Dr. Brent. And so I'll read them both at the same time, but then I can also go back and reread them. And I believe you can see them in the chat as well. So the first question is, what are the contingency plans? And I believe you alluded to this somewhat. What are the contingency plans for GISD to educate children throughout the year as we deal with COVID? And I believe you alluded to some, some of that and you may want to reiterate some things. And then also the next part is how do you assess your teachers and your school system's readiness to teach all children with equity?
So on the first one I'll speak to is that one of the things that, you know, Mr. Sedwick mentioned patience with parents and all this, a lot of adults having a lot of new learning. So the part about making sure we offer online teaching throughout the year is, is like I said before, if school is shut down, one of the things that we will need to make sure is, for example, if there's supplies that are needed, we have community partners that, that raise money and buy school supplies throughout the year and we have partnerships with people. So that help get supplies for students. So there's multiple fronts that we'll be building plans out for. And those include making sure there's Wi-Fi access with the hotspots again, making sure everyone has a device. But then one of the things in, in our team is, is working through right now, and, and all this is in the building process, but is a parent university, if you will, where we offer support to parents on how to manage things like schedules for students, how to manage time for making sure their kids are on track while they have to do their job as well. And, and what are the supports we can better provide? A lot of that's going to need to be like, for example, maybe at one elementary, I know there were 20 families we just couldn't connect with. And there, people often say, how can we help the district? Maybe some of our community groups, we can help you identify the families. We're having a hard time contacting. Maybe you have a connection to some of those families as well and maybe knock on doors and help people get the information they need. But we will have a robust curriculum that rolls out in the fall. So there can be online instruction for all students. And it will be through surveys, through even through paper surveys as people come through the meal lines to get their meals. If they don't fill out one online, maybe we can get them one on paper base and we're rolling that out currently. And, and so that the bottom line is, is we will teach all students. There's one topic about special education students, students with special needs, adjusting those individualized education plans so that we can accommodate their needs and provide the services that we still need to provide. We have students that are medically fragile. We have all, all stu-, you know, a wide range of services that we'll continue to provide. It just looks different. And so connectivity and communications are the things that are, you've heard our parents speak to are concerns that we have as well. And so it's going to be through, through via, you know, telecommunications, phone calls, knocking on doors, individual contact to make sure they have the support. And then we'll go through the curriculum piece. On the next piece, on the, on the ready to teach all children with equity, one of the things that our district started working on in 2018 and our board will be adopting an equity plan called, is basically a district equity plan on how we meet the, the needs of all students. And so there's a multicultural education process for our staff to go through. There's a social justice education and there's a culturally responsive education component to that. Some of the new works that I'm reading is Culturally Responsive Teaching in the Brain by Dr. Zaretta Hammond that talks about, the bottom line is all children, all brains have the ability for higher order learning and higher level learning. And what are the cultural biases that we may not be aware of that gets embedded in our teaching? And are we, what are the trainings that we need so that we are not unconsciously delivering instruction for students that aren't in alignment with their culture and our understanding of their culture? And so there's a lot of equity training that we will continue to pursue. We started a pilot program with three campuses last year. I believe it was Pearl, Pickett and Tippet Middle School and working with our staff to be just understanding more about cultural responsive education. So we'll be, you'll be hearing more about that. But the bottom line is, is that in public education, we talk about the importance of relationships, knowing who your students are. But sometimes we as educators may have some cultural biases that we don't even know that are, are fogging up our lenses of how we see kids and, and do we really expect all students to perform at a high level? Do we really expect all students to reach their full potential? And, and I will tell you, in public education, I will tell you, we have a lot of flaws there that, that we need to grow through and make sure we are understanding the needs of all of our students and, and shaping instruction that is, is reaches all students, but also empowers all kids. We talked about our mission of inspiring, empowering every learner to lead, grow and serve. We've got to make sure we truly are looking out for every learner. And that begins with us understanding the cultural needs of all students and that make sure that we are teaching in alignment with those student needs. So we do have a lot of learning to go through in that and you'll be hearing more about that as the summer comes to an end. And as our board prepares to adopt a district equity plan. And I've tried to speak to that. I hope I answered the question adequately. Did I miss something? Let me know.
I'm sure they will let us know in the chat. And we are trying to, just so you know, those of you that are putting questions and posing questions in the chat or the Q and A, I should say, we're trying to keep up with them as best possible. And I am trying to combine some of them for time so that we can make sure that your questions are answered. It is now 11:26 and I believe we're going to close at 11:40. So I would do the best that I can to try to combine some of those questions to make sure that we're getting them answered. One of the questions that I saw, and I think that all of the administrators can answer this, and then I'll also put in a separate question for that question for the parents as well. And that question is, in view of the uncontested expo-, uncontested exposure, a systematic racism, what changes need to and will be made to the curricula to fairly educate all children and to equitably educate children of color, including them in more representative level in honors classes and producing more informed generation for the next generation? I'm going to put the question, I know, Dr. Brent, you alluded to some of that with culturally responsive teaching. So I'm going to ask that question of Mrs. Simons and then Mrs. Campbell. Not a problem, not a problem. It's a multi-faceted question. Okay? So in view of the uncontested exposure of systematic racism, what changes need to and will be made to the curricula to fairly educate all children and to equitably educate children of color, including them at a more representative level in honors classes and producing a more informed next generation?
Okay. Well, actually in terms of the curriculum, I'll be honest, I'm, I'm really not sure about that. I think Texas curriculum, for the most part, is pretty solid. But I think more than anything, all the stakeholders, really their needs need to be met. We need to be very intentional about our promotion and giving every student across the board those opportunities for advancement. One of the things I know that we do at our campus, it's a part of your campus plan, is that we put steps in place to encourage more of our children of color. We wanted to see more of them in GT classes and we wanted to give them those opportunities. And what we found, depending on the demographics that you serve, not every, not every student is even aware of the advancement opportunities that their kid can have. And so for us, our start was simply providing a forum for parents where they came out and we just gave them information about GT and what it looks like and, you know, how they could tap into those resources. And so we did this, it was a, some type of family night that we had during the fall of the year. I actually think it was open house and we had our counselors there onsite. And we just simply shared information, information about, you know, our pre-AP programs and what the kids can do. But I know for a fact, this school year, as the sixth grade principal, I worked closely with one of our, our grade level counselors. And we together talked about what is it that we could do? Teachers were provided an opportunity, they had a window where they had to actually nominate students for GT classes and for more advanced level opportunities. And so we actually were very candid about, okay, so, you know, in sixth grade, this is, these are the kids that I see. How many of those kiddos are peop-, are kids of color? Or are we just, you know, simply geared toward, i- is it always an expectation that children of color are in special education classes? Or are they in more behavioral settings? And I think all of us, regardless to your district, in the state of Texas, we do have an issue that we realize and that is over representation of kids in color when it comes to the correlation of discipline and also the pipeline, the prison. And so all of us across the state really are challenged with the systems that we have in place so that all kids can receive the necessary resources and access to education. So, you know, it's, it's a, a pretty big challenge, but we can do it one day at a time, one district at a ti-, at a time. But we definitely have to be intentional. If we're not intentional, nothing will change.
Thank you, Mrs. Simmons, for, for that answer. Greatly appreciate it. Greatly appreciate it. Mrs. Campbell?
Um, I agree. We have to be intentional. You know, at the elementary level and at all levels, you know, we're challenged with producing productive citizens. We're challenged with preparing our students for the real world. One thing I noticed, this was my first year as the principal of Ray Elementary and Ray Elementary is a dual language campus. But there were little things that I noticed, such as we didn't have any African-American students in GT. No students had been identified. And I found that, you know, it was, it was just, it didn't, I didn't understand that. I noticed that the celebrations that we had in place, there was nothing for Black History Month. We did not celebrate all cultures. We mainly focused on certain ones. We have video announcements in the mornings and there was only one race that was represented, the students that, you know, did those online video announcements. So my thing has been, like she said, being intentional, noticing the changes that we need to, to make on our campus. Talking to my staff, I've already spoken to Dr. Moore about providing cultural awareness of being culturally.
I was going to say, I think we lost you. I don't know if you can still hear us, Mrs. Campbell, but we lost you. So that we have no audio. So we, we will come back to you. Yes. So you have no audio. We will, we will come back.
I still can't hear you.
Oh, okay. Well, now we can hear you. We couldn't hear you for a moment.
I cannot hear you.
Okay.
Can you all, you all can hear me?
Yes.
I can't hear you.
Okay. Well, thank you. Hoping she can read lips. Yes, I did. Yes, I did. Let's see, trying to get several more questions in and not necessarily in the order that they came in. So here's a question for Dr. Brent. There are several questions. One has to do with socio-economic, not economic, but SEL, social emotional learning. And then there's another, and I'm going to come back to my parents too. And so be thinking about systematic racism and how that might impact your child. But the question for you, Dr. Brent, is why was Black History Month not acknowledged at Eastview this past school year? It is an important extension of the culture you're speaking of. And though it does not necessarily dovetail specifically with looking at online learning, I think that it's really important, especially now that we may have to do some of that online. So that was the question.
I cannot speak to exactly why it was not recognized at Eastview High School, but I know that's something that we will definitely have to look at and, and whether we're online or in person. And, and whether we're online or in person, it needs to be something that we discuss and, and be intentional about. So I, I don't know why. I wish I could tell you. I was not, I, I don't. It'd be foolish for me to even try to give you an answer. I don't know. I'm sorry, I don't know. But it needs to be, obviously. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a problem, and obviously, and I know that with the staff, that's something that we'll be talking about. So thank you for making me aware of that.
I know Ms. Simmons has a follow-up to that, but I'm going to start out with Mr. Sedwick and Ms. Clark about going back to that question as it relates to, and I think they all dovetail, thinking about ways in which we support and value students of color, specifically African American students. What kinds of, I guess, in eight things that you see related to systematic racism that you think could be pointed out to principals, to districts, to be able to help your children be successful? And so, Mrs. Clark?
Okay, so I feel that, and this is just an experience that I had with my children. Unfortunately, there was racism involved. So I recall getting called to the school after an incident between my daughter and another child. And as we were asking questions about what exactly happened, there, it seemed that the principal was, well, she did this, she did this, she did this. And you had another teacher contradicting that and saying, well, this happened first, and this person started it. Well, unfortunately, in that situation, my daughter being African American and the other child being white, it was, it was just pointing all the fingers at my daughter when she didn't start it. And they were ready to get her in trouble without even asking her side of the story. They were just like, she did it. It's all her. And I think that that's a problem. I think that needs to be addressed. Also, I, you know, going back to kind of what Ms. Simmons said and Ms. Campbell, I think Black History Month needs to be celebrated. I don't recall seeing in the district that being celebrated at all. And as far as like what we could do, maybe putting that in the curriculum. I think that for every like Alexander Graham Bell, there's a Henry T. Sampson. So we need to, white history is in line with black history. So I think that we need to teach both and not just one. So those are my opinions.
Thank you. We have two more minutes. And so I'm going to defer against the parents who have stories to tell. I will go to Mr. Sedwick and.
I just realized I was on mute. So we're still learning technology. I'm learning right along with the students and some of the teachers. I was saying that we had, now we have one minute left. I'm going to defer to the parents who had stories to tell. Thank you for sharing your story, Ms. Clark. It seemed that that was something that was really important to you and brought up some real emotions. So I can definitely understand that. So I'm going to give that question over to Mr. Sedwick. And then we're going to begin to end with Ms. Simmons. Also, Dr. Brent, if you can check into the Q and A, there are some more questions for you that you may want to answer, including questions about the equity plan, about students who have special needs, and some others. So having said that, Mr. Sedwick, looking at systematic racism and ways to, I guess, combat that to help your student be successful?
You know, I'm not really sure how to answer that. You know, I'm just amazed that we're still at a time right now, that we're still, that there's still a separate, a separation between a Black History Month or a White History Month and why it can't just be history. I think it's just total nonsense that we are so advanced in learning how to do this, that, and another, but we can't, that we choose not to look at people as people and just, it, it's, it's mind boggling to me. And so I don't think anything in this changes until people's view of people changes. You have to look at people as people. And until, I mean, I know it's probably been said 100 times, it ain't nothing new. Until people view people as people, it's not going to change. And anybody that thinks different, you're fooling yourself, and actually, you're kind of adding to the problem.
Thank you. Thank you. We greatly appreciate these answers, especially from our parents and from our administrators. Mrs. Simmons?
I would just like to share, as a parent of a daughter who is a student at Eastview Middle School and is African American, I too had some concerns with that. But honestly, just the busyness of, of the school year kind of was upon me. And I'm, I was doing different things. And on our campus for Black History Month, per se, we did a daily, or actually, this year, we did every other day, a moment in black history. And that was a part of our announcements. And I actually was told, Ms. Simmons, we're not going to do it every day today because, I mean, this year, because it does affect our, our instruction in the classroom. So we have to look at our timing. And so this year, I was able to do so, but it was every other day. And Mr. Sedwick, I thank you so much for what you shared. It is mind boggling how advanced we have become with our technology. But yet, in the, on the flip side of that is, how primitive we are when it comes to cultural awareness. Kids need to see people that look like them in leadership. And so I was like totally, totally excited when I saw that Eastview's principal was African American. And I met her, and her demeanor seems to be, you know, pretty kind and genuine. But the lack of this not happening was quite concerning to me. And I just kind of chunked it up to, well, maybe it's the newness, and she's getting, you know, her feet wet and acclimated with everything. And I wanted to make sure that, you know, I didn't project any personal issues on it because she happened to be an African American principal. It's like, if you, if you didn't expect it before, you would just really think that it was going to happen. So I'm really not sure on why that did not take place. I know for a fact that my daughter shared her concern, and it was brought to the administration because I teach her, you know, how to advocate for herself as well. I just think it did not happen this year, but I'm very looking, much looking forward to. My expectation with this new school year, regardless to whether we go back with brick and mortar classrooms or we do our learning and in a remote environment at home, it needs to take place because African American history is American history. Without the, the necessary accomplishments of, of so many African Americans and people of color, America wouldn't be what it is today. And so that should be celebrated. I can care less if it's a month or a week or what have you. But every child on that campus, we have a responsibility for. And that is to, you know, provide opportunities for growth and learning. And that's academic, but that's also social and emotionally. And I just think everyone thrives if they see, if they're allowed to see success take place in people that look like them.
Exactly. Thank you. So we're coming to a close. We have two $25 gift cards. But let me preface that with, with saying, you've heard information, we know that this is abbreviated, but you've heard information about thoughts about what does it look like, what's going to happen in the coming year, what might not happen, because there are still some uncertainties. But as it relates to the new normal, not only is the new normal in classrooms as it relates to remotely learning and teaching, but the new normal is also, I believe that many have had their eyes open due to recent events. And so that's part of the new normal. And so we really need to start thinking about what is culturally responsive? What does it mean to value all students, whether it's remotely, whether it's in the class? I think that it's very important. I'm going to go into the, the $25 gift certificates. I know some of you as participants will be excited about that. And then I'm going to very quickly close this out. So there's going to be a drawing for $25 gift cards. If you send your name and your phone number to, and the email is in the chat box. I'll say it out loud. If you're like me, you won't remember it, but I'll say it out loud. It's G G C. She said she'll see it. Say it. Okay.
Send an email to gccma1975.org@gmail.com. Please look in the chat box, you'll find the email. Again, we appreciate your participation, and we want you to win a gift card. So please send, respond to, or send an email to gccma1975.org@gmail.com.
Thank you. Thank you. Again, we know that there were some questions that went unanswered, but we do have someone fielding them, as well as you have your own for Georgetown Independent School District, Dr. Brent, who is making note of questions. So I want to say thank you to all of our panelists, Mr. Sedwick, Ms. Clark, Dr. Brent. Thank you so much for being here, Ms. Campbell and Ms. Simmons. Also to Alma Allen Johnson, to Regina Durden and Lina, I hope I said it correctly, Parkhurst, and the tech staff, who have been the creative geniuses behind the scene and who needs no introduction, but Ms. Paulette Taylor. And so I want to thank her for commitment to, yes, to supporting unity here in Georgetown through her words, but more importantly, through her deeds. And I want to say also to Lark and Tom and her husband Leonard, who are watching, who are a great part of this community. Thank you for watching. Thank you to Mayor Dale Ross and to the city manager, David Morgan. But as we close, I want to say this, and we have to move into a culture of hope. And hope, hope looks like student success, educator capacity, data-driven decisions, and an open mind and an open heart. Hope looks like many different things, but more than ever, we need hope. And we need to understand what it means to give children hope, even if it's done virtually. So thank you for being here with us today. I appreciate, let's see, GCC, I could do better by actually saying it than I can by saying the, the actual acronym. So to the Georgetown Cultural Citizen Memorial Association, thank you for your Juneteenth virtual hall, town hall. Again, this is a 68th celebration of Juneteenth here in Georgetown. We appreciate you. We are open to your thoughts. But no, more than anything, that everyone here today was here out of the goodness of their hearts, initially with their masks on and then unmasked, but we are here. We are looking at education as it relates to our new normal. And again, thank you.